All right, it is now six forty-five P M. Uh, welcome to the regular meeting of the Planet Zoning Commission tonight, uh, May the fifth. Actually, we do have a quorum here tonight. I have myself, Derek Parks Chair, and on my right, we have Kevin Haley, which is a member, and my left, we have Vice Chair Michael Brayley. And with the city staff, we have Ben Hartman, which is the Director of Development Services. We have one consent agenda item tonight, uh, on your, on your sheet, Roma Newman, number two. Commissioners, you have any questions or concerns? We're going to send agenda item, which is approving the minutes for April the seventh.
No.
Can I have a motion, please?
Move that we accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Uh, the consent agenda item has been approved, uh, moving along to number two, which is new business. And, um, this is considered approving a preliminary plat, uh, creating lot one, block one, lot one, block two, lot one, block three, and lot one, block four of, uh, Data Bank Red Oak for a data center complex at the property located east of North State Highway three forty-two. Uh, abstract number one, three, four, four, City of Red Oak, Ellis County, Texas. Case number P S and Paul, S is in Sam, two, five, dash, zero, six, requested by D B Data Center Red Oak LLC. Staff, please.
Uh, Commissioners, uh, I'm going to explain this one and the next one, uh, in, in one go here. Uh, sorry, are they back to back? Yes. Okay. So we're doing the preliminary plat and the final plat tonight. Uh, so I'll just go ahead and explain them both, uh, because it's both, both of the same item essentially. Um, so as you know, we, we start with zoning and then, uh, move on to plotting. Um, so the zoning has already been completed for this. This is for the data bank project out on Stainback Road. Uh, here's Loop Nine here, Stainback here, Ovila Road here. Um, so the, the actual data center will be located on Lot One, Block One, which is this large tract here, uh, consisting of, uh, ten buildings, I believe. And then, uh, if y'all remember from the zoning, this, um, westerly portion, this is back, the extension of Bachelor Road that will eventually go up to Loop Nine. Uh, this remained R A E as a buffer, uh, between the industrial data center use and the existing R E and R A E, uh, homes out here. So in the future, this could be developed as, uh, as single-family homes. Uh, so it's just plotted into large sections with the right of way, uh, that we need to, uh, to have to connect existing roadways and, uh, Bachelor Road for our thoroughfare plan. So the final plat is essentially the, the exact same thing. It's just the actual final plat. And this is what will get recorded at the county versus our preliminary plat, which is just a planning document. Now we're doing this together in the same evening, uh, just to speed the process up, uh, for the applicants. So, uh, when we, when we read off the, and this is, it's not a public hearing, it's just a, a concern for your consideration, because it is a ministerial action based on, because the zoning has already been approved. Uh, but when you do make your motion for the final plat, please remember that the council still has to approve the preliminary plat next week. So, uh, when we approve the final plat, we just need to make it subject to approval by, of the preliminary plat by the city council. Does that make sense?
Right.
Okay. I can take any questions you have on it.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Ben. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions or concerns?
Yeah, Ben, I don't recall discussion of this western area, uh, western, west of Bachelor Road being, I remember it being talked as, as a buffer zone, but I don't remember any discussion of there being single-family houses in there.
Uh, so it just remained, uh, single family as, so before the zoning change was all ag, right? Because we, we didn't know what was going to happen there. We wanted to make sure we had control, uh, and they were using it as ag because they were just farming it. Um, and so essentially to create a buffer between the industrial uses, which is over here, we just made this the same zoning as all of the zoning around it. And so that was something that was, uh, discussed at length with, with, uh, residents and people that came in to speak on it.
Okay. All right.
But they're, they're not planning to.
So it won't always, it, it could potentially not always be a green belt. It could be.
Correct.
Small houses.
Correct. Not small houses, R A E, which is our largest.
Right.
Home district.
Gotcha.
And, and they aren't planning to do that, but that's what the zoning would allow if they sold it to somebody.
Okay.
Michael, did you have anything to add or questions? All right. All right. Commissioners can have a motion for agenda item two, please.
Uh, move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Um, agenda item number two has been approved. Uh, agenda item three, uh, we're going to go ahead, I'm going to go ahead and read that. Um, is consider, consider approving a final plat, uh, creating lot one, block one, lot one, block two, lot one, block three, and lot one, block four of Data Bank Red Oak for Data Center Complex. Abstract number one, three, four, four, City of Red Oak, Ellis County, Texas, P S and Paul, S is in Sam, two, five, dash, zero, six, requested by D B Data Center Red Oak LLC. Um, city staff, uh, explained, um, the final plat, related to number two. Uh, Commissioners, do you have any questions or concerns?
No.
All right. And can I have a motion for agenda item three, please?
Make a motion to approve agenda item three, potential for approval by the city council.
Of the preliminary plat.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Uh, agenda item three has been approved. Uh, moving along, uh, to agenda item four, which is considered approving a preliminary plat for a property zone, P D one, seven, seven, for a mixed-use development with single-family homes, multifamily development and commercial uses located, uh, approximately, uh, one thousand four hundred and fifty feet south of East Ovila Road and east of North State Highway three forty-two. Um, identified in, with P I D numbers, one, eight, eight, two, eight, one, and two, two, eight, two, two, five, City of Red Oak, Ellis County, Texas. Case number P S and Paul, S is in Sam, two, five, dash, zero, eight, requested by G S Red Oak Apartment Owner L P. Staff, please.
So this is very similar to what we just did. It's going to be a preliminary plat and then a final plat. And so we want to, uh, approve it, the final plat, subject to the, the, uh, council approving the preliminary plat. So this was the apartment complex with the, uh, two commercial lots out along three forty-two. Let me get you familiarized on a map here. Um, so here's like Amaya's Restaurant, uh, here on three forty-two, and then there's that, uh, open tract across the street from it and, uh, the big pond in the back, and then Fox Glen Phase Three? Is this, is that what this is, Michael? Or Phase Two? I can't ever remember. Is it Three? Fox Hollow, sorry, Fox Hollow. Um, and so, uh, during the, the zoning, uh, if you'll remember, there's a, a road that was stubbed up here for future development. Uh, but since this is a multi-family development, buyers still wanted access, uh, through here. So it's going to be a gated access, uh, only for emergencies. Um, and that's reflected here on the plat. As, uh, this is a, it's called private access, even, but they're all, uh, private access with emergency access as well. So in the engineering plan, they've got a, uh, a gate here with an OX box on it. Uh, so the front two lots here, Lot One and Lot Three are for future commercial use, and those aren't being developed right now. Uh, and then in the back will be multifamily along with some single-family for rent. Um, they'll, it'll look like houses, but they're just all on one lot. Uh, and, and they'll be part of the rental products that are, that go with the, uh, with the apartments. And then there is the large pond in the back, which is actually after they complete the improvements to the pond, which will be a walking trail.
Is this, is that what this is, Michael? Or Phase two? I can't ever remember. Fox Hollow, sorry, Fox Hollow. And so during the, the zoning, if you'll remember, there's a, a road that was stubbed up here for future development, but since this is a multifamily development, buyer still wanted access through here, so it's going to be a gated access only for emergencies. And that's reflected here on the plat. As this is, it's called private access easement, but they're all private access with emergency access as well. So in the engineering plan, they've got a, a gate here with a Knox box on it. So the front two lots here, lot one and lot three are for future commercial use and those aren't being developed right now. And then in the back will be multifamily along with some single family for rent. They'll, it'll look like houses, but they're just all on one lot. And, and they'll be part of the rental products that are, that go with the, with the apartments. And then there is the large pond in the back, which is actually after they complete the improvements to the pond, which will be a walking trail, some benches and some piers and fountains will be dedicated to the city as a public park. And so they'll have access through the main entry. So the main entry is a, is a public access easement and there's public parking here right next to the pond where you can access the, the walking trails. And if, if you may not remember, but there was some discussion about public bathrooms. And so there is a, there's also access to a public bathroom within the clubhouse of the, of the apartment complex, which is right around here. Uh, yes, so there'll be sidewalk connections that connect to the existing sidewalks and then that go around the, the pond. And then there's those single family homes I was talking about, they, they front the pond and they have little tiny front yards with, uh, uh, small, like three foot high gates on them. But again, this is the preliminary, preliminary and then the next item is the final plat.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Commissioners, anything to add or any questions?
The, the apartments and the single family homes that's still in line with what we were presented originally is the concept?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Anything from you? All right. Can I have a, a motion for agenda item four, please?
Make a motion to approve agenda item four, the preliminary plat that's presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Agenda item four has been approved. Moving along to agenda item six, which is conducted public hearing and consider text amendments to the planning, I mean, Red Oak zoning ordinance to change the definition of new motorcycle sales to include additional power sport vehicles included side by sides, A T Vs, U T Vs, four wheelers, recreational off-road vehicles, on-road motorcycles, off-road motorcycles and three-wheel motorcycles requested by city staff. Ben, please.
So Commissioners, this is a, the item we talked about at the last meeting that was brought to us as a request for development under the, the H O District, which allowed motorcycle sales, but they weren't really doing motorcycle sales exactly per our city definitions. And so when we also presented to the council, they asked us to come back with a new definition that included the other power sports items such as U T Vs, A T Vs, side by sides, other four wheeler type vehicles. Additionally, they asked us to come back with a, another definition for power boats and jet skis and things like that. So we'll be bringing that to you next time as per their request. So these would be, we're just changing the new motorcycle definition. And so it's still going to have all of the same requirements. So like in highway oriented district, it'll still require an S U P. Same thing in, in C one, all the parking requirements will be the same. We've just simply said motorcycles and power sports. So that when someone comes in like this again, we can actually classify them.
Okay. Makes sense.
And this is a public hearing.
All right. This is a public hearing. So those that are in favor of this item, item six, you can come to the podium and if you come to the podium, you can please state your name and your address, please. Or if you have any questions regarding the agenda item six. If not, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing has been closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions regarding the text amendments to the Red, I mean, Red Oak zoning ordinance?
I know.
Anything from you, Michael? Go ahead. All right, and can I have a motion for agenda item six, please?
Move that we approve the new wording of the ordinance.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Agenda item six has been approved and can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Move that we adjourn.
All, say, all in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. This now concludes the Planet Zoning Commission.